Yes.
You were four, I was four.
Absolutely.
Yeah. You meant like here.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's present.
Yeah.
He said that he was interested, okay. I see.
Huh?
It's clock, it's clock. Like water boy.
I need a pan of water.
I'm walking in the water.
Oh shoot. It's alright, alright. I gotta get my gavel. Alright, can we call our regular meeting to order? Uh, would you go through the roll call, please?
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Driscoll. Mrs. Marburger. Dr. Fries.
Here.
Dr. Meiser.
Here.
Mrs. Van Haas. Eric. Ms. McConnell.
Alright.
Would you please join me in the pledge allegiance to flag? Pledge allegiance to the flag. To the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm sure we have visitors here who want to talk, so take a number and have at it. Who wants to go first? I'll go first, alright. Did, well, I wanted to be here this evening to publicly thank you, Dr. Personnel, for all you've done to the school district. I was president of the board when we hired you. Very proud of the fact that we did. The district was close to, if not in financial abyss at the time. And you lifted us up out of that with your guidance and direction and why not everything that was done by the board or by you. It was popular, but everything was right and set the direction for the school district to where it is today. And I thank you and I want to tell you, Litchfield, they're very fortunate to be getting somebody like you to run their district down there as well. And thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Cow.
Mr. Melkin, I can't say it much better than that, but I will add that it was a pleasure to serve on the board for twelve years. And as president, four years, I got to know Rick very well. Um, and I know we'll continue to be friends and play some golf together because you're not leaving the community. And Litchfield is, is very fortunate to have you. But I wanted to also say on behalf of my wife and I, a message from her, she wishes you the best and don't be a string.
Thank you, Mr. Melkin.
And there's really not much I can say that these guys haven't said, except for the fact that I really appreciated the way that you always put the community and the kids first and everything that you, you did and everything that we decided as a board at the time and and Taylorville's gonna miss you a lot.
Thanks, Jim.
Here.
I'd just like to reiterate what these guys said, two years I spent on the school board. I learned a lot from you, Doc, and I hope the school board and the city can have a good relationship as we've had in the past with Doc and I. And I'd like to just thank you personally, you gave me the confidence to run for mayor and I appreciate that, all you've done for me, so thanks a lot, Doc.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any other questions, comments or war stories? Alright, we're gonna move on. Thank you. We're gonna move into consent agenda, but due to one of our observant board members has pointed out that on May thirteenth, we did not have Pam McConnell listed as present, and yet she was making motions. So we probably ought to correct that, so we will pull that out of the consent agenda and we'll address that in our next regular meeting. Thank you, Dr. Meiser.
I just wanted to know, I read it, I read over the whole.
I would have been terribly disappointed at United. From the road warriors to reading the minutes. I'm terribly amazed. That leaves us with the remaining four minutes to review and does anyone else have any other corrections? If not, would entertain a motion.
Someone?
Thirty seconds?
Dr. Fries?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll. Mrs. Van Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger? Ms. McConnell? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
All approved. Alright, review of the claims. I'll let you topic at the treasurer's report to explain how good we're looking right now, you and Wendy, but I just want to comment that in comparing this to last year's uh, report, we're, we're right on pace, except we got more money left over, so things are looking good. That last payment that we got from the state categorical has helped us yet greatly. Does anyone have any questions or concerns or questions on the claims? Would entertain a motion. Move, pay our bills.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Fries?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll. Mrs. Van Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger? Ms. McConnell? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Why do you want to give a little bit of a pressure? Why don't you do that one, get us going there?
So, um, a couple of items that we are, you know, in a good position with the cash and the education fund at this point in time. As we wind down, definitely that third categorical payment from the state definitely added to that in terms of that situation. The good thing is on the state side of it, we have a budget, which we haven't had a budget in, I don't know how many years this early. So he has signed that and out of that, um, now the state board is calculating the evidence-based funding based on the, um, three hundred and seventy-five million that was appropriated. So that's another twenty-five million over what was appropriated last year for that. He has also increased the categoricals, which is good, so hopefully they will get back to full funding of categoricals, that being transportation. Uh, mainly transportation, that they get back to that eighty-five percent instead of the seventy-two percent that they're going to fund. So we're optimistic that this will come to fruition. You never know, there could be another categorical payment arrive between now and June thirtieth. Depending upon where the state is cashed on with the budget, okay? Which would be really nice if they got everybody back to ground zero in terms of that situation. This month is the end of the month close, when we get to that, it's a very busy time for Wendy and, and getting, getting the books closed down ahead of the audit. The audit will be coming in the second week in July, is that scheduled?
July eighth.
July eighth, which is typically when Mr. Mathias and his group arrives. They'll be here about two weeks because we have to have a single audit because of the federal money that we receive. So he'll be, um, doing that audit as well. As I indicated earlier, I signed the letters ahead of time so that there wouldn't be a problem with the transition, so that the audit can come flow. So hopefully that information will start to be coming in, so that audit with Dr. Dotterick coming in, that, that audit can just naturally flow that, flow the course in terms of that situation, so, you know, you know, the books, we projected, uh, it looks good. As, as the district moves forward in terms of that. So it's, it's coming together where, where it needs to be and the governor did, um, put back the six percent, uh, back into, he did sign that, so, um, in, in terms of that situation, so that takes pressure off contracts as, in moving forward until there's a change on that. The forty thousand dollar minimum also passed. Taylorville will be fine with that, by the time that legislation comes to fruition, the district will be well over forty thousand dollars for its teachers as it starts, so it won't have a problem meeting those expectations too. Um, as we put together this budget, um, that'll be Wendy and Dr. Dotterick will put together the FY twenty budget for next year, the minimum wage increase. We will be in compliance with what's required July one of twelve dollars, correct?
Ten.
Ten dollars, but we will be in full compliance with that legislation as well. So I think everything's coming, tonight, you'll see the rest of the pieces of the puzzle have come together, so as I depart, everything will be in order, as I told you, um, through my report, with the exception of the FY twenty budget. I, I will not be working on the FY twenty budget. And you will see that in August, like you always do. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, consideration of personnel sheets.
Yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, I'm telling them what were meant.
Oh, that's, that's since we're talking about budgets right now, go ahead with, explaining why we have to, we have to schedule a meeting.
It's already scheduled.
Well, it's already scheduled, but
We're gonna have a budget amendment meeting on June twenty-first at seven o'clock. We have some extra categoricals coming, so we had extra revenue that we had to include, and then we had a little bit of, was it building that was the extra for?
Transportation.
Transportation.
In transportation, um, you, you never know what's gonna move into your district in terms of transportation. And we had some students that required additional special education transportation and that increased our budget. So we are, we are going to over, over expand in transportation, so we have to record that because of those students, increased costs.
We'll have a meeting here on the twenty-first. Twenty-first, so
Go over it, it's just
Seven o'clock.
Five minute meeting, six minute meeting to amend the budget. And we added some additional money to the building fund. Remember this year, we kinda had a few issues with the gas line at Taylorville Junior High School, went out on us and we had, those are unforeseen things that you really can't necessarily budget for. And then the hot water heaters at Memorial went out as well, those are things that you just can't budget for. Other than that, your projects have come in on time. And as you look to next year's budget, uh, with the window project, that, that will be included in next year's budget. So, um, those things will be, will be there, so that's, that's the need for that. Thank you, Wendy. And you need a personnel sheet.
Yeah. But personnel sheets, but they, as they always do, they've changed, you know? They all do that? They all, okay.
They're all good.
First, this time, we didn't have any changes. Yeah. Why not? Well, sometimes it just works out. Alright, go ahead.
So we have, um, a, a couple of resignations this evening. CJ Mathis, custodian, Taylorville High School, effective June fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Taylor Little, preschool teacher, Central School, effective at the end of this school year. I'll talk about personnel here in a minute in terms of the openings that we have today. Change of assignment, Steven Keller, math teacher to dean of students, Taylorville Junior High School, effective two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. Kristen Solomon, fifth grade teacher, Taylorville Junior High School, to science teacher, Taylorville Junior High School, effective two thousand nineteen, twenty. Mary Harris, custodian, Stonington Elementary, to night shift custodian, Taylorville Junior High School, senior high school. Peggy Coffey, secretary, Stonington Elementary, to secondary, North, effective two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. Mary Vaughn, computer aide, Stonington Elementary, to computer aide, Taylorville Junior High School, effective two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. Dawn Wright, library aide, Stonington Elementary, to library aide, Taylorville Junior High School, effective two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. And then Karen Koontzman, co-principal, North Elementary, to principal, North Elementary School, effective two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. We have a correction, um, Lindsey Davis, technology assistant, will be starting on June twentieth, two thousand nineteen. And then Lake and Poozy will be hired as the preschool at-risk coordinator, effective, um, the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. So, um, as we look at today's spreadsheet on openings that the district has currently, you have a high school principal at Taylorville High School. You have two preschool openings, both at Painta Elementary, because you'll remember the last month, we moved Kelly McKee to Central School, so uh, we have got both those jobs posted for preschool opening because we run Painta's grant. So we're responsible for hiring two teachers for the Painta program. Uh, they have been posted, we are getting applications and Mrs. Poozy will be, uh, working on filling those positions, um, as needed. We currently still have a social studies position at Taylorville High School. Then we'll have a fifth grade opening at Taylorville, um, Junior High School. We currently have a second grade position open at North Elementary as well. And then we have a science position, which we're working on getting that taken care of, so that will be a good, a good fill, filling that science position, because I can tell you as of today, there's twenty-seven hundred openings, teaching openings throughout the state of Illinois in science positions. We received, Mrs. Miller, two, two applicants for the junior high science position. So far, how many have you received on high school science? Zero. And that's not atypical. Today, in preschool is also going to be a problem, um, to fill. There aren't any early childhood teachers out there either. So I think is, you know, as the district moves forward, you know, hopefully, you know, things will fall into place, um, in terms of, of hiring. I mean, we're in, it's no different, it's not Taylorville, so don't, don't think it's Taylorville, it's, it's all over the state of Illinois right now. And actually, it's nationwide, okay, in terms of a teacher shortage where things are at, in terms of that. The administration is doing the best that they can with the applicants that they have and then making recommendations on behalf of our children for our district, and that's, that's the number one consideration that they, that they have. But it's definitely a, a job seeker's market right now. You can pretty well go where you want to go. If you have that, so, and then of course, we'll advertise for the custodial position. As I alluded to, we're not going to have, Mr. Taylor retired, uh, last month, and we're not filling that position. So I'm working with Mr. Walters and Mr. Wester on that. So the only position we'll have is Mr. Mathis's position at the high school to fill, and I feel real confident in terms of being able to find applicants for that, for that position too, uh, which will come back. Much of these new hires will come at the July board meeting, okay? Uh, in terms of, in terms of that situation, okay? That's your personnel sheet this evening.
Any questions? Looking for a motion.
All second.
Dr. Fries?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll? Mrs. Van Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger? Ms. McConnell? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Alright, a little trip work. Taking a trip.
Oh yeah, we have an overnight request from the FFA, the administration recommends you do that.
Yeah. Well, you have voices, I just want to point out one thing though, these are two trips, uh, July eleventh to the fourteenth. And then, uh, that's historic Farm Days, Minfield, the other one is a half-centred progress. That's on August twenty-second to the twenty-fifth. Now, our students will be gone all day there. They will be staying overnight, obviously, but Larry Berry, the president of the alumni association, that is gonna help take traction that they overhaul, or I should say, uh, reconditioned and put in mint condition, it's an international H. And a lot of the parts were made with our CNC machine. So kids will be displaying that and showing off what they're, what they're getting done, it's gonna be some very, very good press for us and, and some good accolades to show what, uh, we have one of the best programs in the state. We need a motion if we want to send these kids.
Second.
And this can be done with voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both, same time, we're passed. Okay, now, old business, none, new business, consideration of the general supply bid.
Yeah, included in your packet is the, uh, bids for the general supplies that Mrs. Levine put together. It does reflect an increase of four thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents. Remember, we don't buy every year, we use all the supplies and then we go out to bid. And then price increases and those types of things represent the increase in cost. So we recommend that you accept the votes as presented.
Anyone have any question on bids? No. We wanted to buy them, we need a bid.
I'll make them up soon.
Okay, move.
Dr. Dr. Fries?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll? Mrs. Van Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger? Ms. McConnell? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Alright, text contract. Okay, so this is the elementary textbooks.
Yep, this is manual thing for our supplies and materials for the elementaries. Uh, you can see this year's bid, uh, reflects a total cost of twenty-one thousand, one sixty-four ninety-five. It actually shows a decrease of five hundred dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, we recommend that you approve, um, the bids that's presented this evening.
I'll move.
All second. Dr. Fries?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll? Mrs. Van Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger? Ms. McConnell? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
I like a pass. And now, we move on to property casual liability insurance.
Yes, um, uh, we received information from our insurance, uh, bidders, or our insurance renewal this year. Uh, we saw eight point eight percent increase. Remember, we had claims on the tornado claims. Uh, and that's one of the reasons that we elected not to go out for bids, because of the claims, we'd like to have a year clear of no claims. In terms of that, it represents an increase of twelve thousand, uh, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty cents. Remember, this is paid for out of your toward fund, so it's not general fund dollars, you levy for your property casualty. Then this year, we're also recommending, it's Mr. Koontzman and I's recommendation, that you purchase cybersecurity. And the district has not had cybersecurity. What that does is that protects you if somebody comes into your system and hacks you and does payroll damage. It's not if, it's when these people do this. Uh, we were at a conference and a district was held hostage by these folks and they ended up having to pay in bitcoins to get the code, or they weren't going to open it and they were going to destroy all of your information. And the district ended up paying them in bitcoins to the tune of about half a million, uh, in bitcoins to get the however many digit number they give you. And they don't, the way these, the way these characters operate is, is that they determine how much they get, okay? They, they're not in the business to destroy you, but they can sure do some bad things to you once they get into your system. And, um, they gotta give you the code to open anything up, you can't do anything, no payroll, no nothing. And, uh, do you like to elaborate on that a little bit?
No, I agree, it's, it's just a matter of when, that we have some sort of security breach. It's very common anymore, unfortunately.
This is just something you have to do. Um, this is the society we live in. Um, and they gave us a quote for the year of six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. But remember, it is, it's not cheap, but just think of the damage that happens if you don't have it. And listening to other school districts that basically got into this fiasco, it would have been far better to have that money spent than what they ended up actually having to spend, um, getting on top of this, but that's
It's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I mean, in this day and age, you have to have it. It just gives you protection to have that, so that's what we have, Mr. Turner.
Alright.
I assume.
Dr. Fries?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll? Mrs. Van Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger? Ms. McConnell? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. And one of the final contracts.
Yeah, I'm proud to announce, uh, Mr. Turner and I, we announced last month that we had successfully, uh, negotiated the, uh, a four-year agreement with our educational support staff that matches our teaching contract. And, uh, we've got that tonight, they approved that, uh, last week at their meeting. Represents, uh, year one, four percent, year two, four percent, year three, three, and year four, three. So it just basically runs with the situation. We also addressed bringing the mid-state support personnel into the contract and blending that into the contract. So all of that is reflected as, as we move forward. So all in all, it's a good contract, it was a good negotiation process, Mr. Turner?
Yes. It's much friendlier than many, I think. So, say that. We need a, they have ratified this and so we just need a motion to approve so we can sign it and be on our way.
I assume.
Dr. Fries?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll? Mrs. Van Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger? Ms. McConnell? Mrs. Marburger, Ms. McConnell, Mr. Turner.
Yes. I'll sign that after, and we will get that signed and silver out of here. They'll have to come in and do their thing. And the, the next thing that we need to talk about are salaries, non-bargaining salaries, and we will need to go in closed session to do that. So, entertain a motion. Second?
Dr. Fries.
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll, Mrs. Van Haas.
Yes.
Dr. Meiser.
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger, Ms. McConnell, Mr. Turner.
Yes. All right.